Thirty First Nation. This area we call the Fraser Valley Regional District. Important decisions that we make at the local government level can affect First Nation communities, indigenous peoples and organizations in many different ways. So part of our responsibility, a commitment, we continually examine the work that we do and are guided by the principles of inclusion, collaboration and reconciliation. So that am I like to call the meeting to order for Sitem, please?
Looking for approval of the agenda, addenda and late items.
All right, move, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved by Director Fazio and seconded by Director Adamo. Discussion, any none, all in favor, pose if any item carries this item?
Four point one is the FBRD twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven financial plan. And we'll just turn things over to your chief financial officer, Kelly Lonsborough, and manager of financial operations, Beth Klein.
Morning.
Okay. Good morning, board members and members of the public. I am Kelly Lonsborough, Chief Financial Officer. My colleague Beth Klein, manager of financial operations, and I will be walking you through the draft financial plan for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven this morning. By way of background, the FBRD manages approximately one hundred and twenty unique service area budgets, all with distinct purposes, unique tax bases and specific revenues and expenses that cannot be shared with other service areas. A service area could be a water system, a sewer system, a full electoral area for certain shared services, or it could be a regional service area that is applicable to all property owners in the FBRD, such as for mosquito control, for example. As each service area is established by bylaw, it is essential that we manage the funds effectively on a service area by service area basis. The financial plan is a five-year plan, but of course we review annually. So decisions made today for years beyond twenty twenty-three can and will be revisited. In order to present a solid financial plan involves a thorough internal process. To that end, my colleagues have joined us here today and are here to answer any questions that the finance team may not know off the top of our heads. Budget owners, typically the managers who oversee multiple service areas, will review their current year's budgets, actuals and year-end forecasts to assess how the current financials are tracking. They will then prepare the next five-year plan for each service area and will include any new funding requirements over and above prior years. The finance team reviews all budgets on a line-by-line basis and works with budget owners for any anomalies. We then proceed to senior leadership review. Adjustments are made to get the financial plan to a place where we can present to board members for endorsement. This is where we are today and we are looking forward to the discussion. We do have certain budgets and key decisions that which will we will present and request a motion from board members. At the end of the presentation this morning, we will present the two options referenced in the board report that was issued with the agenda for this morning. Ultimately, we are looking for support to proceed to the next step in the financial plan process, which is public consultation. Similar to last year, we plan to use the Have Your Say website for the public consultation of our plan. This will include the presentation materials for all service area budgets. The Have Your Site, Have Your Say site allows for public questions and staff will be responding. We will open this as early as tomorrow, depending on the outcomes from today's meeting, and will close the public consultation period on March third. This will allow the finance team one week to consider and incorporate the feedback from the public into the financial plan that will come back to the board in March for final adoption.
Ms. Lonsborough, before, before we continue into the plan, I just want to, because logistically, I'm going to be watching the screen for questions from board members who are joining us by Zoom and, and here in the, in the room. So I'll just ask, because I don't see every board member on the screen that if I miss a raise hand function or anything, Ms. Van Ness, if somebody can, can watch for me there as well, just, just so I don't miss any questions. And then as we're doing the process, if board members have questions, would you like to take them throughout as they come in, so it's fresh in everyone's mind?
That, yes, that would be great.
That work?
Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, and we have the rest of the presentation on screen. So we will, oh, I'm having those problems. There we go. Okay. Now we're ready. This morning, we will cover the topics listed above. You should now have copies of the presentation materials in front of you or else in your email if you've, if you're joining by Zoom. So we'll cover these topics this morning. We strive for transparency and to that end, we have presentation materials available for all service area budgets for regional and subregional budgets. We are also cognizant of time constraints and overall impact of certain budgets. To that end, we have adjusted our approach from last year where we went through each and every regional and subregional budget. This year, we will present only those service area budgets where the proposed tax increases are greater than inflation and/or there are new proposed projects or initiatives that are funded by taxation. The other slides for service areas that we don't have is the focal point of our conversation today are still in the materials you have. They're in the resource section. They have been summarized in the report that was issued with the agenda for this morning's meeting. So those materials will all be published on the Have Your Say website. However, should there be any questions from the board today, we are happy to review any of those service areas. So these are the ones on the slide that we'll be covering this morning. The financial plan timelines are highlighted on this slide. The timeline for this year's financial planning process was shifted to accommodate the election. The intention was to ensure that new board members did not inherit a new or partially developed financial plan. We did our best to delay this to ensure full visibility to the new board. The timeline on this slide does not consider the internal preparation that begins in the summer months. The financial planning process is a phased approach. We have stage gates on certain budget groupings in order to be prepared to move to the next stage. Each stage is iterative and allows for the incorporation of feedback. This timeline on the slide also does not show the operational funding support recommendations that were confirmed by the board in November. That was for six operational support budgets. In December, we spent sixteen hours meeting individually with electoral area directors between the dates of December thirteenth to December sixteenth. All proposals were finalized with the EA directors. In total, seventy-two budgets were reviewed and supported with those directors. Community Works Fund plans were also reviewed in detail with each of those electoral area directors. You'll note that in December on the slide, there's a reference to assessment data. We received property values for each of the service areas. And that's a hundred and twenty service areas and a lot of data. We use that data to help predict the estimated tax impacts for the average residential property owner. We do this to provide a tool for decision makers, a way to essentially translate the total service area funding requirements to what it means to the average residential property owner. In January, staff received and revised our estimated tax impacts with the latest assessment data, the property assessment data. We incorporated the Community Works Funds projects right into the financial plan and we conducted municipal CFO consultation on the regional service areas. This year, in addition to sending out materials to those regional CFOs, we invited them to an in-person or Zoom consultation meeting. The, the participants opted for a Zoom meeting and we, we consulted with those who wish to participate. We also started our engagement with the electoral area directors. We had three service area presentations, three East Committee of the whole meetings to review eight budgets, the area-wide, the ones affecting electoral area-wide services. Now in February, today, following today's meeting, we will incorporate any feedback we received and then proceed to public consultation. The public consultation period, as I mentioned earlier, will end on March third, and then we will prepare the financial plan report and bylaw for adoption at the March board meeting. By legislation, the financial plan needs to be adopted by March thirty-first. Okay. This financial plan is no different than any prior years in that fiscal management and conservatism is key. By way of direction to budget owners, we ask that no stone remain unturned. We look for efficiencies and we do not just simply roll over amounts from prior years. Staff were asked to put forward budgets that are conservative, but also reflect what is required to run the services and meet legislative requirements. The FBRD is always seeking to maximize external funding opportunities by seeking grants, for example. We continue to focus on asset management and to that end, we are focused on making sure the financial plan for reserves, which are essentially capital funds set aside for asset replacement, is set at the right level, not too high, not too low. Historically, many have not been at a reasonable level and pose a risk to the service area participants as well as the FBRD. Okay. With each budget comes risks. Some of the more notable risks include the significant inflation rate and increasing costs. Residential property values don't change in a uniform manner each year, nor do they change in a uniform manner across the municipalities or the electoral areas. So the changes in each particular service area can be complicated to explain, and some areas may experience greater increases compared to other property owners, for example, for the same service. In November, we presented our asset management plan to the board and we are continually looking to refine this information. A lot of great work is underway, some of which, some of which will likely inform asset replacement values going forward. This is a slide showing the inflation trend. I think it's no secret that the inflation rate is rather high. So at six point nine percent, BC is slightly above the national average of six point eight. This information is of, as of December, and we don't have any further updates at this point in time. The next couple of slides are about property values and taxes. BC Assessment has a responsibility for property assessments, which are the basis of taxation. We update our budget information with the latest property assessment values in order to provide effective tools for decision makers to understand the impacts of the decisions on the average residential property owner in a given service area. Unlike municipalities who typically have one budget and one tax base, each of the nearly one hundred and twenty service area budgets has its own unique tax base. The bottom line tax impact to a property owner depends on their specific property increases compared to other properties within that same service area. It's also important to note that the FBRD does not experience windfalls when assessments increase. We receive the dollars we budget. This slide shows an abbreviated timeline for regional district budgeting. We are currently in step one. We are confirming the funds that are required for each of the service area budgets. The property assessment values are not finalized until April. All of the estimated tax impacts in the presentation materials are just that, estimates. By April, when the property values are finalized by BC Assessment, the rates can then be calculated or set, and the requisition process is initiated by the rural taxation branch of the province. This results in the FBRD getting the exact dollars we require. Earlier in the presentation, I mentioned service areas with low reserves. Reserves are funds set aside for capital requirements, for example, asset replacement and in some cases, major maintenance, somewhat like a condominium's contingency fund. Staff have identified a number of service area budgets that are considered at risk. These are budgets where financial risk is greater than the more common risks such as inflation. The FBRD strives to maintain its assets in good condition and ensure that there is adequate funding available for scheduled as well as unplanned maintenance, repair and replacement. Should a service area have a need greater than budget in a particular year, there would be a few steps taken. Depending on the urgency, a board budget amendment would come forward, typically for items greater than ten thousand dollars, to authorize the spending. And then if the work is absolutely required and there is no budget available, the budget will end the year in a deficit position. By legislation, we are not permitted to carry a deficit. So we, we would need to increase taxation in the immediately following year to recover all of the deficit. As you can imagine, this could be dire for some taxpayers. We are seeking to find that right level of funding to avoid these potentially devastating financial shockwaves by having slow and predictable tax increases. We have completed some early works on estimated asset replacement values and the level of funding that should be contributed on an annual basis in order to achieve a reasonable financial position for these service areas. A number of factors are considered in developing these recommendations for reserve contributions or savings. In a report to the board in November of twenty twenty-two, we highlighted a number of asset management activities that are underway and are on the horizon. We are looking forward to these initiatives as we are confident that they will provide the basis for stronger asset management practices and will include documentation of the practices already in place or being contemplated. The strategic initiatives identified will assist in the guidance and development of capital plans and adequate levels of taxation. In the meantime, we have previously elevated certain electoral area budgets for the board's awareness as the levels of reserve funds are not at appropriate levels and could have serious impacts should infrastructure fail or major works be required ahead of schedule. In each of the nine service areas listed in the following slides, I am pleased to report that the draft financial plan for twenty twenty-three includes the level of reserve contributions as recommended by staff. I will briefly cover these topics, but keep in mind we do have senior leadership team and budget managers available to answer any specific questions. The next three slides illustrate these service areas that have been identified as assets at risk. While the electoral area directors this year have supported replacement reserve contributions that are in line with expectations of requirements for the future, this only moves the dial, but doesn't eliminate the risk in one year. These service areas are all, on this slide, are all in electoral area A. The landfill is funded in part by taxation and soil revenues, though soil revenues are rapidly declining, therefore we needed to adjust the tax requisition this year. The sewer system is nearing end of life with low reserves compared to estimated replacement costs. The water system has minimal reserves. On this slide, these service areas all have limited funds and aging infrastructure. These, these service areas are in electoral areas B, C and D respectively. The Yaw Water System, Moore's Valley Sewer and the drainage in East Popcom. On this final slide of the FBRD Assets at Risk, these service areas are in electoral areas E, G and H respectively. Each has little to no reserves.
Chair Lam, I think that there's a question at the table?
Sorry about that. It doesn't show up on my, on my screen here, sir. Oh, that's because you haven't pressed your button? Oh, no, it is. Director Lowen, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to clarify, on those previous asset, assets at risk slides, just to make sure I understand, the replacement reserve contributions are directly linked to taxation of that specific service area? Okay?
Yes, that is correct, Director Lowen.
Okay, and should, let's say, a crisis occur in that a particular service area where that, that asset is suddenly going to incur expenses beyond their capacity to, to meet in any given year, does the FBRD then, as a, as a collective, advance the funds? So how, how do they manage that if they suddenly don't have the, the reserves to, to meet the need?
Thank you for the question, Director Lowen. That is an excellent question. Typically, there could be external funding available if, if there was, and, and that's by the, the grace and good, good fortune, but you can't rely on that. So if there is no special grants available, there's no extra funding, what would happen is that service area, and maybe it's only twenty property owners, some of these service areas are very small. And if that happens, that service area has to be taxed the following year. By legislation, we can't carry deficits. So it, it is quite a risk because you can't rely on winning the lottery in grant funding. So we, we're trying to make sure that we have that right level. We don't want to overtax. We don't want money just sitting there, but we want it ready so that we don't, we avoid those potential dramatic, potentially dramatic and devastating shockwaves. Yeah.
Thanks, Director Lowen. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll move on to another budget. We want to highlight is it's a budget at risk. This is the combined E nine-one service area budget. So the FBRD is under contract with ECOM nine-one-one for the initial call handling of nine-one-one calls. The initial handling of these calls is also known as the primary public safety answer point. So this budget that we're presenting, that I'm presenting this morning, is for all, all charges related to that public safety answering points to those services to the FBRD. Combined E nine-one-one services are funded by a call answer levy, which is based on landline accounts. As a result of the public switching over to cell phone services and discontinuing landline accounts, the associated revenue has steadily declined. The reduction in revenue negatively impacts the reserve and surplus balances that help fund the, the operations of the primary safety answering point services. In spring of twenty twenty-five, the current funding of the existing call answer levy will cease being available for the, the legacy Telus nine-one-one network. By then, the full transition to the ECOM's next, next generation nine-one-one system must be complete. The estimated annual cost to implement the next gen nine-one-one system is sixty-five thousand dollars and is in addition to the existing contractual fees currently in place with ECOM nine-one-one. The five-year financial plan is challenging without a new revenue source or expanded source to include cell phones. So this year, this five-year financial plan assumes an increase in twenty twenty-six of our call answer levies, but in order to accomplish that, it will require legislation changes. At the time of budget preparation, we anticipated the call answer levy for twenty twenty-two to meet budget based upon our, the actuals we had received throughout twenty twenty-two and as well as the actual revenue received in twenty twenty-one. However, at this point in time, with more information on actuals to the end of twenty twenty-two, noting we still have not received the full year's payments from one cell phone provider, we do not expect to meet budget for twenty twenty-two. In the column twenty twenty-two, that is the budget figure, and we do not expect to meet it. The shortfall in twenty twenty-two will ultimately mean a quicker depletion of the surplus balances and a more pressing need for a new revenue source. At this point, we are raising this budget as a budget at risk. We continue to work with ECOM nine-one-one, but understand work and recommendations have been made by UBCM to the province on issues related to nine-one-one service delivery, including standards, governance and funding. I do note that ECOM nine-one-one representatives are scheduled to present at next week's board meeting. Okay. The next few slides are financial summaries for the municipal, sorry, for the regional and subregional service area budgets. This slide was in the report that went with the agenda materials. It summarizes the total regional budget tax increase for twenty twenty-three. Of the two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase over twenty twenty-two, two hundred and fifty-five thousand is funded by member municipalities, and in fact, the electoral areas are experiencing a savings of two thousand dollars as compared to last year. This is due to the distribution of those property assessments that I mentioned last year, or earlier this, in the slide. Regional budgets consider the overall tax base of each participant and the overall share is greater for municipal members than in twenty twenty-two. This morning, of this list of regional budgets, we will cover the regional grants and aid budget as well as fire dispatch service area budgets later this morning. This slide summarizes the total subregional budget tax requisition increase for twenty twenty-three of the total three hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight of that is funded by member municipalities and the electoral areas are funding thirty-one thousand dollars of the increase as compared to twenty twenty-two. We will review the search and rescue, animal control and regional airpark service area budgets in this morning's presentation.
Yeah, I see Director Dixon got a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. Wanted to think I would know this answer, but I just want to go back to the fire dispatch, so that budget two forty-seven. Did, did you say that one is coming up separately or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I didn't look far enough ahead. Thanks, I'll wait then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The total municipal increase, this, so this slide is the, the summary for member municipalities. So it really shows the, the proposed tax requisition for each of the municipalities for twenty twenty-three as compared to twenty twenty-two. It also shows the average residential property assessment values and really what that, that tax impact is at the, the very bottom line is what the incremental amount is for each of the municipalities for the, the average residential property owner. So the total municipal increase in overall dollars is five hundred and forty-three thousand compared to the tax levels in twenty twenty-two for regional and subregional budgets. This amount includes two hundred and fifty-five thousand, as mentioned earlier, for regional services and two hundred and eighty-eight thousand for subregional services. So the total requisition, tax requisition increase equates to an average increase in property taxes for municipal residential property owners of four dollars, four dollars and one cent overall. So the increases for the average residential property in Harrison Hot Springs, Hope and Kent are higher as a result of higher than average increases in the residential property values compared to other member municipalities. Okay. This slide reflects the impacts of the regional and subregional service area budgets on electoral areas. So it's laid out in the same way as the, this, the previous slide for member municipalities. It shows the, the draft requisition, the taxes for twenty twenty-three for, just for the regional and subregional budgets. And we show the comparison for what that requisition amount in totality was for twenty twenty-two. We show the average residential property values for each of the electoral areas and then the average residential assessment increase. And then we get down to the bottom line, the average residential property tax increase. So we get to the bottom line, the electoral area portion of the regional budgets, it's actually a decrease of two thousand dollars as compared to twenty twenty-two, while the subregional budgets have increased by thirty-one thousand as compared to twenty twenty-two. So the total requisition increase equates to an average increase in property taxes for electoral area residential property owners of seventy-eight cents overall. And that's an annual figure. Okay. The next, oh, there's, I see a question from Director Horn.
Director Horn, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to kind of make sure I understand correctly. So essentially, the difference for mission. So essentially, the difference for Mission, which had the largest increase out of all the municipalities, you and the EAs, is largely due, if I understood correctly, to the fact that Mission's property values have risen, I should say, at a higher rate than the rest of the region. That's my first question.
Through the chair to Director Horn, yes, that is correct.
So my second question is, does that normalize? You know, if Mission has a lower than typical increase in the future, does that normalize itself in some way? I'd have to sit down and do the math, but I'm abbreviating that by just asking whether or not in budgeting, typically it ends up working itself out in the wash later on. Because I know that, you know, we're not going to see a decrease when our property values are not rising at that higher rate. So I'll let you answer that.
Through the chair to Director Horn, you're not in the room to see me smiling. I'd be happy to work with you on the mathematical exercise of that, but theoretically, yes, you're correct. You know, there's a lot of factors, and every year you'd have to look at the comparisons between all of the other municipalities and electoral areas. But theoretically, if there was a year where Mission was below average, it would normalize.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So we are going to move into those selected budgets that we mentioned, that I mentioned earlier, that will be presented this morning. So through this session, we'll be a bit more interactive. We'll have Beth Klein be participating as well as my colleague Stacy Barker for some of the service areas under her umbrella. But the first one, I will cover off. So this is the subregional service for search and rescue. This service area funds the four search and rescue detachments in the Fraser Valley. In terms of funding the search and rescue, it is specific to each area. So search and rescues are funded in the following way. So the Kent and Harrison Hot Springs Search and Rescue is funded by Kent, Harrison Hot Springs, and Electoral Area C. Hope Search and Rescue is funded by Electoral Areas A, B, and the District of Hope. The Chilliwack Search and Rescue is funded by Chilliwack and Electoral Areas D, E, and H. And Mission Search and Rescue is funded by Mission and Electoral Areas F and G. So this year, we have received a request from the Chilliwack Search and Rescue to increase their budgeted amount that we provide. They approached the F V R D for an increase in funding specific to the helicopter lines. So this is in order to assist with their annual operating costs for helicopter fixed line, for their helicopter fixed line program. So we understand that due to the remoteness of the areas surrounding Chilliwack and the need for injured people to access medical facilities in a timely manner, this Chilliwack Search and Rescue has long used helicopters to access and evacuate injured people in a timely manner. The Chilliwack Search and Rescue changed their techniques due to the nature of the terrain surrounding Chilliwack and the increased incidents in remote locations that traditional helicopter rescue techniques, hover exits and tow-in landings, were not adequate and put a significant number of rescuers at greater risk. So the program involves a technique that uses a helicopter with a special long line to insert or evacuate members into areas that otherwise would be inaccessible or where traditional access and rescue methods would mean unacceptable delays or put a greater number of rescuers at risk. So Chilliwack Search and Rescue advises that their annual funding requirements of this program are approximately sixty five thousand dollars, and they have requested support of fifty thousand dollars. So the next two slides show the detailed version of our five-year plan for search and rescue grant contributions. And we are presenting two options for your deliberation this morning. So on the screen right now, and what is reflected in your financial summaries, the materials you received included the fifty thousand dollar grant. So all of the summaries in the board report and the tables that you saw earlier in the presentation are assuming the increase in the funding. So you're seeing the greatest amount of funding in the tables. So it's important to reiterate that it's only Chilliwack that Search and Rescue is requesting the increase this year, but it's not just a one-time payment, but they're requesting ongoing funding for their class D helicopter fixed line. And looking at the other three search and rescues, we've included a nominal or minimal increase based on our historical growth rate. It's two point five percent that we've grown those search and rescue fundings at. So this is the five-year plan, assuming the increase. And then the next slide. The next slide is an alternative. It's the option here on screen. Well, now it's on screen. Thank you, Beth. I don't want to see how I am in an exercise class with coordination, coordinating the slides and talking.
Thank you, Ms. Lonsborough. I've got a couple of questions here. So I see Director Mercer. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just two quick questions. Do these budget figures, maybe I'll just back up. Are we still actively pestering the province on grants and funding for search and rescue? I mean, it's half the province that comes to the Fraser Valley and gets themselves in trouble. And then we, as taxpayers, are paying for search and rescue. And as you'll know from my previous rants, both at U B C M and others, that the province is completely dropping the ball and abdicating their responsibility for search and rescue. And our own search and rescue people should never, ever, ever be involved in fundraising. They spend enough time hanging off ropes off mountains and under helicopters. And it's just blows my mind that they put as much effort as they have in the past still in fundraising, and the province is not doing what they should be doing. That's my first question. And the second one is just a comment in relation to your comment about Chilliwack being the only one to look for money for doing class A helicopter rescues. That's completely normal, for those that may not know that. All of our SAR teams work on mutual aid, and each of our SAR teams in the province has a different skill sets that they have to validate annually. And if, for example, we leave somebody in a cave and the team doesn't have cave rescue certification, they may rely on Chilliwack or Nourture Search and Rescue. So it's completely normal for one team to be asking for one thing and maybe Harrison asking for more wastewater money, right? So I just want to put that into context, follow up on your comment. But I'm still interested about the grant pursuit and how we, as a regional district, are still chasing this province, so to speak.
Sure, through the chair to Director Mercer. In terms of that kind of advocacy, I wouldn't say that there's a formalized direction that we are doing that on an ongoing and active basis. I would say that this board, through its participation through U B C M, that's a topic that comes up quite frequently during the resolution session. I know in the past that we have sent letters on behalf of the board, but it's not something that I can say that we're doing on a monthly or quarterly basis following up on. It's not really our service, per se. And so typically, what we try to do is focus on the F V R D provided services, and we lend support to these organizations sort of in a supportive way.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
Are we including our MLAs in these letters and correspondence?
Absolutely. Through the chair to Director Mercer. In any of that kind of advocacy work, we always copy the MLAs, the relevant MLAs, as well as any affected ministers at the provincial level.
So to the chair, I, you know, I think it still burns me that they're fundraising. And I know individually, some of them are still donating their lunch money to their equipment fund to do the business of the people. Like, this is crap. And I think a better letter, rather than copying MLAs, is a letter directed to them saying, what are you doing about it? Instead of CCing them on the bottom of it. They're elected to represent us at the Provincial Emergency Program, which I believe is under the Seoul gens ministry still. Correct me if I'm wrong, Simon, but I believe it still is. And we should be asking our MLAs, what have you done for us lately? And this is a great example, and I would suggest that.
Thank you, Director. Director Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly support Director Mercer's comments. That was going to be one of mine is getting the province to kick in. The other one that I have is, if I was to call an ambulance, I would probably get an eighty dollar bill, or it might have been increased. And just looking for a little clarification around, is that something SAR could decide to do or don't do or could implement? And because it's, sometimes, you know, I think the thought is, well, if there's a cost, people aren't going to call for Chilliwack Search and Rescue. I kind of have heard that. My thought is a little different. If my life is hanging on the line, I would be willing to pay, you know, to receive a bill for that helicopter that just came out and rescued me. But I'm not sure where that's at.
Yeah, and it might be, you know, a better question directed towards the search and rescue folks and not, and not our finance staff, but you can take a crack at it if you wish.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Director Dixon. I would tend to agree with the chair. I can't speak on their structure, their abilities on that. I don't know what they have in place in order to do that. I think it's an interesting concept, but I don't know.
I can answer that for you if you like.
Thank you.
The answer is no, it's a provincial government policy decision that they not bill. I do know from personal experience over many years with SAR is that often there is a discussion between the victim, so to speak, and the SAR program. And often they'll make donations, but there's nothing formal in place. But, you know, I couldn't agree more, you know. And if somebody's going to choose to walk up the gross grind in high heels, so to speak, and they get stuck, I think they should be paying. And I use that as perhaps a bad example. And I don't mean it to be sexist, but it happens across all, with males as well, getting themselves in absolutely asinine predicaments based on poor judgment and stupidity. And we, as taxpayers, are paying for it.
Director Pagan?
Thank you, Chair. This morning, the Minister Lanakopam, Minister of Tourism, is making an announcement on support to festivals and tourist-related fairs, et cetera. Search and rescue has become a big part of tourist-related activity. And I think that this is a provincial problem that our search and rescue guys and girls spend so much of their free time helping others that I think it would behoove us to advocate on behalf of them to the province to fund search and rescue to a much bigger degree. Yes, they get equipment money, and yes, they get lunch money. But as Director Mercer said, many of the search and rescue teams donate that back to get good equipment so they can rescue tourists to our area. And I would be in support of advocating for them at the provincial level.
Thank you. I saw Director Gibson. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I want to affirm what Director Mercer noted a moment ago. I will, in comforting him a little bit, I speak from experience with Mission Search and Rescue. I was able to secure considerable funding for some equipment, not operating, but capital. So there is some provincial interest in that, but advocacy needs to be vigilant. And the other point that we all know is that most of the people we're rescuing are not from our regional district. They're from Metro. So that's the irony. And I just want to affirm, I think our board should be more vigilant in this area. And I think, given that an election might be looming, it's an opportunity in time for us to pursue that funding on an ongoing basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fazio. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully support the avenue of seeking funding, and we can also put some wording into our representative who sits on the tourism board for the village in regards to search and rescue. The one thing that I would just like to clarify as well, that, am I correct in saying to the financial officer that a portion of the boat launch fees from Harrison does go to search and rescue to help out with their funding? Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair to Director Fazio. My colleague Beth has confirmed that that answer is correct. Yes.
Okay, I have a question. Were you finished on this particular service item? I've got a question on it.
By all means, Chair Lam, I was going to go to the motion, so.
Sure. Maybe before we get there, just curious how the additional fifty thousand breaks down amongst the service area participants.
Thank you, Chair Lam. This fifty thousand would be funded by, and through the bylaw, the bylaw has a percentage breakdown. So it would be funded by the city of Chilliwack, eighty-six and a half percent, Area D, three point nine percent, Area E, two point eight percent of the fifty thousand, and Area H, six point eight percent. So it's only those four areas that would be funding this fifty thousand dollars.
Right, so eighty-six percent of which comes from the city of Chilliwack, though?
Correct.
Okay. Other comments or questions, Director Davidson? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Three, two, to Ms. Lonsborough. Just for clarity, I'm trying to understand the service area modeling. My understanding was is that you'd have essentially one mil rate for one service area. So are we actually able to tax different properties at different rates within the context of a single service area?
Slonsborough?
Through the chair to Director Davidson. Yes, it's been set up in a bylaw, how each search and rescue is set up, so we have that ability within our bylaw.
Thank you. So let's move to the recommendation and trying to think of the best way to do this because the increase here, maybe we'll try and do a straw poll on the increase, because I'd like to hear, or I'd like to, it's not a weighted vote. We're making a recommendation here. But I'd like to see kind of a straw poll from the participants who are going to pay the freight on the fifty thousand dollar increase to see where they're at. I've heard from Director Mercer. Is anybody else in the particular area for the helicopter long line additional fifty thousand? And then we'll do the status quo, or sorry, then we'll do the area as a whole. Is that okay? Does that make sense? I just want to tease out and figure out, are we going to move ahead with the request? Or are we going to try and go status quo and back to the province? So Director Mercer, just one question. Well, let's straw poll on these ones. Director, Director Adam, I'm going to come to you because the increase is going to be affected by those, primarily the four.
Yes, electoral areas D, E, H, and the city of Chilliwack.
Okay. So I heard from Director Mercer. Let's see, Director Popov?
Yeah, I'm supportive.
Director Dickey?
Yeah, I'd certainly support long line rescues.
Okay, Director Clute?
Yeah, also support it. Certainly would like to see some funding by the province, but don't want to hinder them and put them back in any way, so.
Director Dixon, got a idea of where you're at?
I would probably begrudgingly support it because I'd way rather the province to be taking care of this because I just think that it's unfair, really, that all of us are taking this on when, and it has nothing to do with the search and rescue. So that would be why I would support it this time around.
Okay, Director Bacconic?
I support it. I think it's necessary. Thank you.
Director Mercer?
Director Mercer. Just a quick question. I may have missed it or misunderstood it, but are all our electoral areas sharing in the cost?
No.
And that's, that's, for me, that's a problem. Because everybody's service areas may have a search and rescue team that's not certified in longline rescue. Which means when they have a situation that requires it, they reach out to a team that has it. So it could be a search and rescue team that's not. Contributing, might be the only ones that will use it this year three or four times. I'm making that a hypothetically, but it's, it's not a. A Chilowak or those other area-centric people that use it. It's there to be used by the people that don't have it, the groups that don't have it, and that's the way the mutual aid works.
And from what I understand, though, Ms. Lonsborough, not, not arguing your point there, Director Mercer, but. The other teams funded by some of the other service area participants may have skill sets that we. May have to call upon and we're not necessarily contributing to, but can I mark you down as a. As a, you're okay? All right, so it looks like we've got support for the fifty thousand, the longline. Director Adamo, I'm going to go to you.
Thank you. Through the Chair to, to staff, just a question for some context. How often is the helicopter used on an annual basis for a rescue within that service area? And if the average cost of a helicopter rescue is a thousand to sixteen hundred dollars per hour. And the average rescue is three hours, the fifty thousand dollars wouldn't really achieve that much in terms of, of being. Very effective throughout an entire year. So just some comments and a couple of questions there.
Slonsborough.
Through the Chair to Director Adamo. I can't speak to the frequency of their use. I, I can't speak to those statistics. No.
Maybe more directed questions to the SAR-specific folks asking for it. I don't know if this is meant to cover all rescues in, in. In their entirety, but, but to help offset some of, some of the stuff that they have to do. But we could probably circle back to SAR and ask the question about how much that longline is activated.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Lam. We can circle back. I do know that they've estimated their annual cost at sixty-five thousand and they've requested fifty thousand.
Okay, uh, it's, sorry, I just saw Ms. Van Ness you pop up there. Usually that means I'm doing something wrong, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just see that Director Horn has his hat.
Okay, sorry, Director Horn, and then I've got Director Dixon.
Just very quickly to the point that you made, Chair Lam, that I know, for example, Mission has a mobile EOC unit that we use when we do mutual aid. So I, I just wanted to emphasize or give an example of what you said, where things do tend to balance out in terms of SAR mutual aid.
Thank you, Director Horn. Director Dixon.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just quickly, I think, is the six point eight percent for area H, like is that based on the total assessment value of. All the, all the residents in area H? Is that how we got to be six point eight and the other guys are less?
Through the Chair to Director Dixon, that would be something we can get back to on the history of it. It's how the bylaw had been established at the time.
You have an additional four percent of your residents get lost more, maybe? I don't know.
No, they're all getting lost up in Chilowak River Valley and, you know.
So that is specific to the bylaw and nothing to do with assessed values, so, yeah, we'd have to look at that.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, it might be that eighty-six percent of the people in Chilowak that get lost up there. Director Dicky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just thinking back the history of the development of this bylaw. I believe those were numbers that were established through the board. They do not represent population. So for instance, the electoral area D contributes about four thousand dollars. We would not have four percent of the population in that catchment. But that was what was decided at the time of the bylaw establishment.
Okay, all right, so on the. The rest of the budget as presented, so the option one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the question on number one, option one.
Need a mover and a seconder for that one, Chair Lam.
Oh, I do do. Let's move by Director Fazio, I think by Director Popov. Additional, yeah, and we're, this, just, just to reiterate, we're all going to vote on this, correct?
That's correct.
It's going to be, if we make Ms. Van Ness start counting based on who's participating and who's not, I think we're going to get in trouble here. Okay, so we've got a mover and a seconder. Any additional comments on service area two forty with the longline in? Don't see any, all in favor, opposed, the motion carries, and next item.
Okay, thank you. So for the next service area budget that we are going to cover today, it's the animal control. Service area, I'm going to pass the, pass the baton over to my colleague Stacy Barker.
Thank you. Happy to talk about this special service today. So the FERD provides full-service animal control to all of our member municipalities with the exception of Hope. This service includes investigations and violent enforcement, ticketing and adjudication of those tickets. Animal care and sheltering, adoptions, we pick up dogs at large, we pick up dead animals on the roadways. We are dealing with dog licensing, aggressive dog designations, associated court proceedings. And we're also involved in responsible dog ownership education, and we do patrols in parks. So this service is run out of our community animal response and education center, which we call the Care Center. And that's based here in Chilowak. This service is active twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for emergency response. We work closely with RCMP and police force in the municipalities. The Care Center is open to the public. Six days a week, Monday through Saturday. But the center is staffed seven days a week because we have to care for all these animals in our shelter. We have capacity for twenty-four dogs at the Care Center. In addition to some small areas for poultry and livestock that we also sometimes house. For those of you who may not be familiar with our program, we run a very modern compassionate program that the board and the district can be very proud of. It is referred to as a pro-adoption program, which means we do not euthanize dogs or animals for reasons of age. Or breed, or the time in our care, or space constraints. The only reason for euthanasia would be that they have an untreatable medical condition if, and it's causing them distress. Or if the dog cannot be rehabilitated and is at risk to the public. So there's currently a mix of about sixteen or so part-time and full-time unionized staff dedicated to the animal control program. And this is managed through Ms. Trina Douglas. I just want to note, though, that this particular program is. Very involved in administrative side here at the regional district, so due to payments of licensing. Human resource issues, payroll, frequent FOI requests. I see Jamie's glance there, definitely. One of the top reasons there, communications and engagement needs. It's very much fully integrated into a lot of the, the staff effort in this building as well. So the FERD also provides assistance to various First Nations communities. And, and not enough First Nation communities. We have many who, probably a dozen, who also want to join this program as well. And so we're looking at ways to bring them into the service. Now, not specifically part of this two-five-five budget that we're looking at today, but as a parallel program. That also provides some funding to this service is our electoral area aggressive dog program as well. So I'll just jump back to the slides here. So just key highlights of the, this particular budget plan. There are some increases to operational costs. Some of this is offset by some surplus. For example, increases in vet fees. We have increases in fuel costs, vehicle maintenance. And adjudication costs. These are things that are really out of our control, but are involved, part of this service. Another thing that is included in this budget is grant funding is proposed for Elizabeth Wildlife Center. So fifteen thousand dollars has been included in an effort to consolidate. Funding that had previously been provided separately by the city of Abbotsford. And some funding as well from the regional district. In this budget, we are proposing to consolidate that funding. There's also a few new projects that we'll talk about on subsequent slides. So I've talked about the increased operational cost. Another thing here has to do with the increase in animals impounded over the past several years. And a reduction of claimed animals. This seems to be a unintended consequence of COVID. This is anecdotal, but it seems to be certainly something that people are experiencing across North America. I think that when there was many people at home, and many people purchased dogs, and then they decided they didn't want them anymore. And so pounds across North America are, are, have more dogs in their care than they had previously. And adopting those dogs out have been more difficult, so we're hoping to see. You know, rebalancing of that, but it hasn't happened yet. Not included in this budget is capital planning for building replacement, but that conversation is going to happen soon. This spring, in, in short order, we will bring that to the board. Another thing we will talk about at that time is the bylaw associated with tax proportions. Of this particular, how this service is funded, so we'll have a deeper discussion on that as well. The next slide. So these are the. The projects that are proposed this year, all of them funded out of appropriated surplus of reserve. We're looking at improving access control through linking fobs through our security system. We're looking to upgrade our phone system to assist us to give notices through the telephone. For people who have not remembered to renew their dog licenses. And we're looking to make some small improvements to our livestock and poultry housing at the pound. Thank you. Okay, so on the screen, you will see the five-year financial plan for this service area. A couple highlights to this, these financials, as Stacy mentioned, the Elizabeth Wildlife Center grant is included in this budget. Starting in twenty twenty-three for fifteen thousand dollars. And this does increase taxation. Majority of the operating expense increases are related to the vet costs, as Stacy mentioned. As well as licensing fees and adjudication costs. There is a transfer from reserve surplus in twenty twenty-three. Assisting in keeping that taxation low. As the five-year plan moves forward, we are decreasing that reliance on the surplus and reserve.
Could you get closer to your mic, please?
And if there's no questions on the financials, we are looking for a motion on the two options on the screen. First is staff recommendation as presented. The second option would be to remove some of those projects that Stacy had gone through. However, most of these are funded by surplus and reserve, so there would be no effect to taxation in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Remind me again the service area participants, or is that right on the first slide? Maybe I missed.
So it's the municipalities with the exception of Hope.
So this is all the municipalities with the exception of Hope. Okay, perfect. Why don't we do this the opposite way? So we'll straw poll the service area participants. Does anybody take issue with? The projects as presented, no taxation increase. I'll, I'll start there and say if anybody has an. Issue with it, otherwise I'll assume we're okay by consensus. Participants, don't see anyone throwing their light on, so. Horn. Uh, yes, Director Horn.
Um, more of a question, Mr. Chair. Two questions. The first is just something that happened in my own household. And I thought was probably an anomaly until I heard from a couple of other constituents. It's not mentioned in, in any of the budget packages there or costing. I know that we received two, two invoices for the same dogs. And then later received a fine, which we was, we were able to resolve. Because the system indicated that we hadn't paid for a license because we had two different tracks. Essentially, one was based on a renewal and the other was as though it was a new entry. As I said, I think that was, I thought that was an anomaly, but I've heard from a few others, and I'm wondering whether or not we've addressed. If there is a system issue, whether we've addressed it, it strikes me that that inefficiency could become quite costly. And it could also affect our projections on fine revenue, so I'll pause and listen to the answer to that one first.
Okay, um, that, Ms. Klein or Ms. Parker?
Yeah, through the Chair to Director Horn. I haven't heard of any issues with our system at this point, but. I haven't heard of any issues at this point with our system, but we can definitely look into it and get back to you.
So there was a number and Director Horn, it sounds like maybe if, if you hear of or become aware of. Any of those issues, connect them right directly with our staff and can look into it.
Okay, thank you. The second question is just about the, the future discussions. It was mentioned earlier in the slides. I don't know if. Ms. Lonsborough can back the slides up a tiny bit. I think it was about two or three slides back. Here we go. So essentially what's being talked about here is that the, the increases are necessary, period. But we have at Mission had some concerns about the distribution of the funding. And so what's being discussed here is that those will be two discreet conversations. The funding increase is necessary. But also the, the distribution of how those funds will be addressed could result in some change later on in the year. Is that an accurate statement?
Slonsborough.
And thank you, Chair Lam. Through the Chair to Director Horn, yes, that is correct. Following the budget adoption, we'll be engaging and, and discussing how that original bylaw had been established. With the funding levels and having a conversation on that, but it is discreet from this year's budget.
Thank you very much.
Director Clute.
Thank you. With the communication systems upgrades in this budget that's before us. Is that simply a text message system to people just as a reminder, or is there also opportunity to engage with people? I, I am aware of people who have been invoiced for dogs that they no longer own or they put down and those types of things. So I'm just curious, is there also an opportunity there to engage further with some of those type of things?
Slonsborough.
Thank you, Director Clute. I'm going to ask my colleague Stacy Barker to speak to the details of that, please.
Sure. Certainly, if your dog has passed away or you have rehomed it, we need to know. We will assume that people still own that dog. In our system, our, our, our system will still issue an invoice for that dog. So we do get calls if people have not done that and, and clear that up, and we apologize if that's happened to you. Sometimes it can be. Distressing for people who have lost a dog and certainly not something that they want to get in terms of an, an invoice, but, but that does happen. And in terms of communication. So currently, our staff try to make personal calls to thousands of people trying to encourage licensing. It's quite effective, but it's also very time-consuming. And so we've been looking at a system to, if, if people are, have signed up for it. For either sending emails or, or messages, but also phone reminders of, of licensing. And the, the access control, did you, did you ask about that as well? No, okay.
Thank you. Uh, Director Gibson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just want to note that Elizabeth Wildlife has a really good symbiotic relationship. With what is being done by the animal control, and certainly I'm affirming that recommendation. The other thing I'd like to ask is Stacy had some really good prepared remarks right now. And it's the first time I've really heard something so comprehensive, and I'd like to request that those notes be disseminated to directors. I'd certainly like to see those. I think they're helpful and explain the function quite clearly in capsule form. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Gibson, and I'm sure Ms. Barker appreciates. And I'm sure Ms. Barker appreciates your remarks. And I think she's heard them, can probably provide a good summary to pass on to constituents. Other comments from the area participants? Director Klute?
Sorry, another question that comes to mind. So there's some improvements that are being proposed for livestock and poultry housing. How does that work? And I know we're in the COVID or past the COVID pandemic, but people are getting a lot of pets and potentially livestock or poultry. Do we also have a no euthanization policy with that? Or what do we do with with that?
Sparkler?
Yeah, so this livestock and poultry are a difficult one. Thank you for asking. Poultry, we 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 even had a peacock at one time. We get pigeons, we get we get mostly chickens. Sometimes people will bring pigeons in that maybe have fallen off a truck that is on its way to slaughter. But sometimes there's there's chickens hanging out on the on outside of those boxes. But when we get them at the care center, certainly, we are looking to rehome them. Occasionally, if necessary, we will, we have sent some animals to auction. But it is not not our 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 first choice, and that can be hard. Typically, we we deal with a stockyard for like a horse or a cow. But things like pigs or goats, those types of things. We have a little bit of room for them in in the back of the pound, but we certainly would like to to make that a little bit better for their state.
Keep me posted if you get any more peacocks. I could use a
Your neighbors will. Thank you. And I understand, not just through the pandemic, but through the atmospheric river event. We took on livestock that is stranded or abandoned. And so so really appreciate the hard work of our animal control staff. Director Fazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully support the the increase. And I think every other person in Harrison has a dog now or two or three. And it's good for somebody I know that has a business in dog grooming, God bless her for that. But and I fully support it. It's it's a great, this took a lot of pressure off the village by having this regional district take over the 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 dog situation. It was just a pain in the neck for a body officer to deal with dogs and everything else. So this is a great system. And I fully support the 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 extra funding to improve the facilities and the communication, which is very important for the public when they are trying to communicate. If there's a problem, let's let's improve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director McInnes?
So I approve it on the staff recommendation, but I have a question.
Oh, you froze up, Director McInnes?
If we're going to be looking at capital expense to be able to be incorporated into the new capital building. So if it's going to be happening soon.
I'm going to take a stab at this. I think you asked, because I got about every every second word of yours there. I think you asked why capital improvements that are proposed this year wouldn't be incorporated into the a new capital building, realizing that and under our current arrangement, we're going to have to potentially, are we going to have to move that building? Is that what you asked?
Yeah, sorry if I'm breaking up. I have a little bit of spotty. So so yeah, I'm just asking, so if we do the improvements, will they be implemented into the new capital project or will they be lost? I'm just for, you know.
Right. No, I think I think we've sort of encapsulated it. We know that we have to move that building. So Ms. Barker, are those required, are those capital improvements going to be needed? At least for the next couple of years that we see utilizing that building or?
Yes, thank you. This is something that staff has has thought about. And so improvements to the livestock and poultry area, we're hoping to make it movable. So something that we we can move easily if we need to.
So we'll be, yeah, it'll be a good investment and not throwing good money after that. It'll be something that we'll be able to take advantage of should we have to move the building. Sound right?
If I may, Chair Lum, I just would like to jump in. I'm not entirely certain that the entire board is fully aware yet of some of the future capital needs. And I just wanted to assure you that that conversation will be coming forward in terms of future planning for animal control in the coming months. So some of you seem to have some confused looks on your faces with regards to the current facility. As many of you may know, we currently lease that facility through the city of Chilliwack, and we need to plan for the future and figure out what the future needs are going to be for animal control throughout the region.
Thank you for that, Ms. Kinnaman. Okay, so we've gone around straw poll on the participants. I don't see anyone opposed to utilizing those funds of surplus for the projects that are proposed this year. Ready for the mover in a second there on the recommendation, and I'm going to say the recommendation as presented by staff. Smooth by Director Ross, second by Director Pranger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed if any, and the motion carries. Thank you. Excited.
Okay, so next is the FBRD Regional Air Park, and I'll pass this on to Stacy Barker. Thank you. So the FBRD operates a grass airpark located in Hope as well as an emergency landing airstrip located near Boston Bar. The service area members include Hope, Area A and Area B. So the airpark in Hope has a small flight center and observation deck and washrooms and showers available for visitors and pilots. We sell aviation fuel and we have land available for leasing to for agricultural purposes or airport-related infrastructure and recreation. We also have a rental house there. This airpark is a critical hub for emergency response in the area, including staging for wildfire response. It also can act as a strategic emergency transportation hub, which we saw during the atmospheric river event in late twenty twenty-one. The grass landing airstrip in Boston Bar is used for emergency landing purposes, but it also acts as an important staging area for wildfire operations. Both the airpark and the landing strip are rented out by the province for their use during wildfire suppression. So this service has very minimal staffing. Daily operation is provided by an onsite contractor and oversight and administration is provided by Christina Vagdevine, the manager of parks. This service area is challenged with, there is minimal taxation and revenue sources to meet the needs and demands of increasing usage, including emergency operations, aging infrastructure, which includes our fuel distribution system, trying to stay up with aviation safety compliance and the rising cost of supplies and labor. Staff continue to work on increasing revenues through new leases, space rentals, and we are actively seeking grant opportunities. Christina Vagdevine has done a very good job. She's working currently with Jamie Van Ness and and seeking some new lease possibilities. So that that is very positive. Revenue reserve funding is limited for this service and asset infrastructure upgrades are required. So just turning back to the slides here, I think I've talked about the key highlights in terms of asset lifecycle replacement and rising costs for certain services. I think you can go to the next slide. We have an increasing demand for use of the site through from emergency stakeholders. We're hoping to develop relationships and seek more profitable partnerships in the future that can assist this airpark moving forward. Next. So these are the improvements that we are putting forward this year. There is a rental house on an adjacent but joined properly property. And the fifty thousand dollars is going towards just much needed improvements that have been overdue as well as some improvements to our flight center. Again, minimal improvements, but just improvements for safety as well as the development of an improved fuel safety plan and procedure. These projects would be funded through reserves. Thank you.
Hey. Okay, sorry, back to you.
On the screen is the five-year financial plan for the service area. So yes, there is increases due to inflation for the operating costs and fuel. However, there's also a decreased reliance on the reserve surplus contributions. So in twenty twenty-two, we are bringing in about twenty thousand more than our capital projects. And in twenty twenty-three, we are only bringing in reserve surplus to cover those actual projects on the screen previous. And that is most of the increase this year.
Director Smith?
Yeah, thank you. So the, how much rent do we take in from that house that sits there on the property? Do you know?
I
That may not be a fair question.
I believe it is seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Christina Vagdevine, who's on the line. This year, we asked for the rental increase, which I believe represented maybe fifteen dollars a year more, I mean, a month more. I believe that's all we can ask for, but
It is, it's it's a very small house, just so everybody knows that. It's very tiny. I was just kind of curious because when Mr. Hislop was there, he used to do all the repairs himself on the side. So that was kind of nice of him that. Also, so we have, we've had a few more shelters at the airport for storing planes and that, some upgrades. We must get more income from that. That's helped with that?
So there had been one, sorry, there had been one long-term storage plane there that is still there, but that owner has now paid up to date. And so we did have some revenue from that. And we will work on making sure that compliance is continued in terms of payment of keeping, storing the plane there. And if that doesn't occur, we'll have work to have that plane removed.
Okay, I, oh, is that the nice green one outside there in the yard that's growing needs to be shaved? Oh, okay. And then also want to thank the regional district. So during the flood there, first couple of days were just chaotic at the airport beyond belief. But day three, there was, it was super organized. The regional district did a great job and made it much safer and everything else. The airport has never seen that much air traffic in such a short time. But a good thank you to the regional district because day three, you could just see the professionalism that came there. And thank you for the work you did on that.
Thank you, Director Smith. I know it was hard work from our staff who maybe maybe didn't have it on their bingo card that they were going to become air traffic controllers that that week, but nevertheless stepped up. So Director Horn, see your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I had to step up for a quick second, so perhaps I missed the answer to this question. The resident of the home, do they play any function at all as caretakers? Or do they do anything to help maintain the site?
Sparkler?
The original intent of that property was to house the the keeper of the airpark, but that's no longer the case. The individual there is just a private residence. However, we're lucky to have them there. They have been very accommodating and certainly as Director Smith indicated that they have done a lot of repairs and 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 so that has benefited us as well.
So follow up, if I may, Mr. Chairs. In terms of redevelopment or resale value, this property doesn't really have a resale value, if I recall correctly, because it's basically a part of the airpark itself. And redevelopment would be a bit challenging because I would imagine there are restrictions on how big a property it can be. Am I am I correct about that?
Thank you. So one thing that you may have missed, because I think it was in tiny print on one of the slides, is that we do plan to come back to the board to discuss this property and its future and understanding how it can be best used. And and part of that is exploration from staff to understand how this property is linked to the granting of this property to us originally in the nineteen seventies. And how can we use it in other ways for consideration? However, the the repairs that are projected today are in the budget now are things that really do need to happen. And certainly, if we if something was to change in the future, it would be beneficial for us to do these repairs.
So my follow-up and final remark, Mr. Chair, is I'm concerned about that order of events. At if we're earning nine thousand dollars per annum in rent, it's a five and a half year period before we actually recover. I'm sure there are other capital works that are being done to maintain the property or improve the property as well. And so I I am cautious about this one. I think that while it's important to repair things, fifty thousand dollars is a significant investment in a property that will be asked as a board to think about doing something differently with that might just simply sink these costs with very little opportunity for a return. So that would be my comment and concern on this.
Good, Director Horn. Director Smith, any question?
I believe there has an interest at the airpark and that, and the Fraser Regional District has addressed it. And I I definitely think we'll expand it in the future. I think it's very good. And also another comment from the gentleman at the house that it actually provides security. He's been a very, make it a little more trustworthy leaving your vehicle there because it's kind of nobody around there. So we do appreciate that, and it's at no cost, the regional district, that gentleman doing that service to it. So thank you.
To Director Damo?
Just a quick comment or a question through the chair to staff. Is there any indication that you're looking at at getting some additional funding from the provincial government? As this is truly an emergency hub for any type of emergency response throughout the entire Fraser Valley and beyond?
Sparkler?
Thank you. Yes, I I agree that it is. And unfortunately, things have not gone in that direction. The Ministry of Health or Fraser Health has decreased our or removed the lease payment that they previously had paid. We had written letters and tried to advocate for them to change this stance. This is, I guess, something that they don't do in other areas. And this airpark, because it's a, it is a small airpark, we don't have landing fees. And so that was compensated through from from a lease of use. And so we will be coming forward to the board and with the consideration of landing fees to take advantage of, not sorry, to take advantage of, to make sure that we have the revenues in place to support emergency landings and and access. In addition, because we didn't have any landing fees when we had the helicopters landing there in in the past for the emergency response, damaged the fields and things like that. That was all on us. We didn't receive any any compensation for that. We're working to get compensation through disaster relief, is my understanding, but I don't believe that's been arranged yet. But anyway, sorry, long story short, yes, I I hope that we can continue to advocate for the province to recognize this as an emergency hub.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Damo. Don't see any other questions. So let's just do the straw poll on the service area participants. I heard from Director Smith, but just want to see where you're at.
Yes, I would support this. It's very much needed. Another little addition too is the fact that the emergency training for aircraft is all done there. I hope you come there any day and there's people landing and taking off. That's where they train us, hope, because it's not a busy airport. So it's definitely services the community.
Thank you. And you're good with the the proposed staff projects that are being put forward? Yeah? Director Damo?
Thank you, Chair Lum. Yes, I do support this. I've been out there numerous times, and this is definitely needed to do these repairs sooner rather than later so that it doesn't cost more in the future.
Thank you, Director Johnson. You okay?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I support the recommendations as well. And I personally actually was dropped off at the airpark in Hope for an emergency airlift out of the canyon.
Okay, and so another mover in a sector, Director Smith, on the recommendation, second by Director Adamo? Okay, and so I'm gonna move her in a sector Director Smith on the recommendation, second by Director Damo. Any other further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed if any, the item carries, next item.
Okay, so next we have the region uh the regional service areas. There is two. The first one is the regional grant and aid budget. So the regional grant and aid budget is a somewhat new process that happens year-round. Um this program is grants for to support cultural, environmental, charitable, and recreational services, activities, as well as special events that benefit the region. And so the process that we have here in place is we open the application period after the previous year budget is closed, so in April. And we have a deadline of August thirty-first to receive applications for. Um the budget is up to fifty thousand dollars. This year, we received six applications totaling just over eighty-two thousand dollars, five of which met the criteria as eligible in our policy. So on the screen is the five applications. Um these are listed in the report as well. Totaling thirty-two thousand dollars. So there is Chilliwack Community Arts Council for five thousand, the Fraser Valley Mountain Bikers Association for thirteen thousand six hundred, the Hemlock Valley Homeowners Association for just under four thousand, the Sasquatch Mountain Ski Club for just under seven, and the Stroke Recovery Association of B C for three. So at this point, we can answer any questions on the applicants, um but otherwise, we are looking for a motion.
Okay, thank you, and just to be clear, um this uh regional grant and aid is paid for by all of the board and the grant aid policy, I guess, breaks down um how each um area participant uh contributes, is that correct?
Yeah, so the thirty, the thirty-two thousand dollars is um for all areas, all municipalities and electoral areas, and it's based on assessment.
Okay. I see uh Director Gibson.
Uh thank you, Chair Lum. I I think this is a laudable list, and it's pretty hard not to support it. I guess when I looked at it uh just recently, I thought, well, there's a whole bunch of other organizations that would be comfortable in communities like Mission and Abbotsford or wherever, Hope, uh but they're not on the list. I'm wondering how these are selected. It was explained somewhat how there's a deadline. But for example, you've got at the bottom Stroke Recovery Association. Well, there are other organizations that care for people that have other uh life-threatening ailments and other issues in other communities, but they're not on the list, so. I'm not opposed to this list. I'm happy to support it, but it seems uh as someone looked at it the first time, it looks like very arbitrary, but I could be wrong. So tho- those are my remarks. Thank you.
And I and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, I thank you, Director, for your um remarks, but these are the applicants. We don't seek applicants uh to the regional grant and aid program. These were applicants that came to us, and I guess there was only, did you, did you say there was one more that maybe didn't meet the?
Yeah, there there was just one more that um it was for fifty thousand dollars. Um it was missing some information. We were going back and forth a little bit, so didn't come forward.
So um what I hear is that applicants throughout the region, all doing excellent work, would would all have equal opportunity to uh make application to the regional grant and aid program to review the policy, ensure that they met the criteria, and then submit an application before the board. And I think uh just just uh to your comment too, um the Fraser Valley Mountain Bike Association is doing some work uh Sumas Mountain and around Abbot's Ridge as well.
Chair Lum, if I could just interject for a moment uh for uh new board members uh awareness. Uh it historically, the regional grants and aid were a little bit of an ad hoc process where uh organizations would come forward and the board would choose to uh offer these grants and aid. And it was a couple of years ago that uh the recommendation was brought forward that we formalized this process a bit more um so that there was some fairness and some more awareness throughout the region that this this funding was available. Uh so I think this may be the first time really that we've ever brought forward uh the applications. I think the previous year, perhaps a function of COVID and some of the other challenges, the atmospheric river, we hadn't really received any applications. So this year, uh it appears that we've received a number of applications under this program, and I'm looking forward to increasing the awareness that this is available. And I suspect um the board will have to go through more of an adjudication processes as we get more requests than the funding allows.
You, Ms. Kinnaman, Director Mercer.
Uh thank you, Chair. Just a question through to Ms. Kinnaman or for staff. Um I'm generally in support uh or would be in support of most of this. Um they seem to be uh like community initiatives like trail building and um who could argue with uh an Alzheimer or a Stroke Recovery Association? But I don't, what was the rationale for the Sasquatch Mountain Ski Club to fund the radios for a private user group? Like, what would be the rationale for that? The way it's written, I ju- it's just a question. I I don't understand it.
Um I believe the rationale behind that one was that it serves a large portion of the demographic, because everyone is um everyone in the region, not everyone, but where the region is going to Sasquatch Mountain. So it's a regional um demographic, I guess.
You. Um no, I, oh, you want to follow?
Is this, is this at Hemlock, sorry? So it's a commercial ski operation? And we're funding radios for people to ski on the hill?
I think the mountains it maybe.
Or is it backcountry who skiers or uh?
It's.
And even so, it's an association, it's a club. I'm just uh, it may be great, I just don't understand it.
Miss Longborough, I'm seeing, are we talking ski patrollers? I'm talking a club, like a nonprofit club or something?
Um through the chair to uh Director Mercer, my my understanding, it's for a club. And these, these, some of our criteria, like, not, not some, all of our criteria has to be a nonprofit group or an association. It's not for private businesses. And that these programs have to be accessible to all, so it can't be a private, a private group or a private club.
But it's a private group people can join.
Yeah, it's accessible.
Because the pro patrollers at uh Hemlock are all equipped. I'm just um, I'm just not understanding it. I'm, maybe I'm alone, but.
Okay. Um I'll go to Director Davidson and.
Uh thank you, Chair. So my own comments. When I first looked at this list, some of the things just jumped out at me. Um I have challenges on scope. Um for example, Chilliwack uh Mural Festival. This is the regional grants and aids. Chilliwack community basically says community, not regional to me, so I I struggle supporting that one. The uh Fraser Valley Mountain Bikers Association, when you look at their website a little bit more closely, it does appear to be truly regional in what they do, so. No, I would support that one. Hemlock Valley Homeowners Association, well, we have an electoral area grant aid program precisely for this kind of thing, so I'm not really sure why this is on the regional list. Um Sasquatch Mountain, I know that uh Cell Tower went in there or was approved to go in there fairly recently. So I'm not really sure where the need for communication equipment um uh dovetails with that cell tower that was going in. Um so for me on that one, it's kind of more information required. And the the Stroke Recovery Association, when at the end of the day, it's a case where it really does open the door, I think, for every other um worthy, worthy association uh helping with various forms of other uh various illnesses out there. Um if we're doing this one, then we should be looking at doing anyone who applies. So I I struggle with that, given that that this is health, it's it's and that's provincial mandate. So I think I'm I'm not inclined to support the last one for that reason. So that kind of leaves me with support, clear support for the second, and ambiguous support for the fourth, and no support for the others.
Kate, would you like to make that uh 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 motion to that effect, and we can see if we have a second here on this?
I can certainly make a motion um to, at this time, to uh only support the Fraser Valley Mountain Bikers Association. Thank you.
Do we have a second there on that one?
A second.
Yeah, that's seconded by uh Director Horn, and let's hear some.
It was, it was actually seconded by Director Gil, Mr. Chair.
Oh, was that, okay, sorry, I saw your hand. Yeah, seconded by Director Gil. Uh I saw some commentary in Director Castle.
Thank you, Chair Lum, uh through to staff. Uh correct me if I'm wrong, there's a criteria in place that is in a bylaw that was passed by this board.
That is correct.
And through the chair, all of these meet that criteria.
Yes, that's also correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh there are comments.
Horn.
Director, is Director Horn, go ahead?
Um yeah, similar to the comments made by Director Castle, I think we have a process. Um if we need to look at strengthening that process or have information come back. Um I think we're obviously getting to the point at the end of the day here where we'll present this to the public, whether amended or as it is, and hear from uh people who might be affected by these grant applications, whether they're the organizations or the people they're they're targeting to help. Um so I see no harm in us putting these out for communication. And I also think that if the board wishes to have a different mechanism for vetting regional grants and aid applications, then we should do so, but um I I I wonder why we would sort of arbitrarily decide something when we, when we're asking um our team to basically apply criteria, and they've they've recommended to us that these all fit those criteria.
Thank you. Director Dixon, I saw that you had a comment. You're okay? Okay, we've got uh a motion on the floor. Uh not seeing any other comments. I'll call the question. All in favor? Uh it's just a motion. The motion was to just support the Fraser Valley Mountain Bikers Association. That was the motion that was put forward. There was no amendment. Nope, it was, there was no motion on the floor. It was just a motion introduced and uh opposed that motion. Yeah. Fail, Ms. Van Nessamai, you're doing, are we counting the same way? Okay, so now we don't have a motion on the floor. Would anyone like to introduce a motion?
Horn.
Director Horn?
I'll move that uh we advance the, all of these uh further in the budget process.
Okay, and that's, so that's staff recommendation, seconded by Director Fazio, further discussion. Davidson. Director Davidson, go ahead.
My only observation would be on the ones that are, that are pretty clearly at the uh community level only. My takeaway from this was anytime somebody comes forward with an electoral area grant application, um I'll advise them, well, why don't you try the regional area first and see how that goes? Because that that'll be a a a smaller tax hit on on the area, on the, on the electoral area, if we go that route. So I I take the comments on that they do meet policy requirements. However, this is still discretionary. Um no policy is going to allow for every situation, so I I think, anyway, for reasons I said on the earlier motion, I don't think I can support this. Thank you.
Here, Davidson, um Director Dixon, go ahead.
Um similar comment, I, to me, Hemlock Valley and Sasquatch Mountain, that's the same area, I think, just a different name, but um and and I won't be supporting it as well, just uh I think some of them are too community-specific, so. Uh but totally in favor of taking another look at the policy somewhere along the way.
Okay, other uh comments from directors? Don't see any ready.
I, I.
Oh, sorry, Director Gil.
Uh thank you. Um yeah, very similar comments to the director just earlier. Um I would support on uh us uh looking at the policy ag- again, because I do, I do agree some of them are are far-stretching, but if they do meet criteria, I will support uh moving this forward for these ones.
Okay, so um I'm gonna park, well, we'll park the policy discussion right now, because we've got a motion on the floor on these specific grant uh regional grant and aids that are here. We'll get uh some board direction on that, and then I'll see if there's further direction on what sounds like a a a real desire from the board to um be a little bit more specific in the grant and aid policy for next year. Um so no other comments on the staff recommendation, all in favor? Pose. Hands up high. I've got some directors online too. I want to make sure that we count them. And this is in opposition. Are we good?
I see Director Siemens and Director Macahon. Oh, I think just Director Siemens is opposed.
Okay, and I'm just gonna look to staff on the count here. Motion carries, okay, the motion carries. Now, do we have a motion to review the pol- uh it's moved by Director Pranger, a motion to re- review the regional grant and aid policy? Um is moved by Director Pranger, seconded by Director Dixon, discussion, Director Smith? Or sorry, you're just putting your hand up on the question. Uh I don't see any discussion on the review of the policy, grant and aid policy, no discussion on it. Call the question, all in favor? Close if any, the item carries. We'll look to staff to bring us back the regional grant and aid policy for review. Next item.
Okay, thank you, Chair Lum. This is the last uh formal uh service area budget presentation this morning. So this is for regional fire dispatch. The regional fire dispatch service area budget is for the secondary public safety answer point. The service area is for regional fire dispatch services, including infrastructure maintenance services, radio equipment, fire can be computer-aided dispatch, and records management software. These services are under contract with ECOM and operated by F E R D's Manager of Information Systems and Fire Dispatch Management, as well as one dedicated full-time employee. In terms of ongoing main in i- initiatives, we continue to make sure that we have preventative maintenance and repairs on all of our radio equipment to make sure that we are meeting our regular maintenance schedules and having that equipment, primary and secondary equipment, ready to go and um ready to serve our communities. ECOM nine-one-one has provided us estimated costs of the upcoming next-generation nine-one-one program. So for fire dispatch, the additional annual cost will be approximately a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year. Indeed, this amount has been incorporated into the financial plan, but as mentioned in a board report we issued in November of twenty twenty-two, these amounts uh provided by ECOM nine-one-one were estimates and estimates only, and we have yet to receive anything further from ECOM. Although I don't think they're coming next week to the board. Um I should say that this uh service area is funded by a tax requisition, so unlike the other fire-related um service area I noted earlier, this one is funded in in uh in in most and the majority by tax requisition. Um going into twenty twenty-three, we have three proposed projects and initiatives. These are projects that are partially funded by surplus. These are all important projects that will improve the quality of radio reception, protect the integrity of these important services, and improve the redundancy of the paging service. The North Fraser uh Fire Hall uh radio filter upgrade will definitely increase the quality of service. Um although this has been in in existence for the last few years in this state. Um but the calls, uh there is a lot, there are a lot of static, there is a lot of static on the calls. So this uh radio filter project will help um improve the quality of reception. The electrical grounding repairs, um that's uh also preventative ma- maintenance and will improve the quality and also protect our equipment. The paging system, uh we do have information that shows that the Abbotsford pa- the paging system and that's in place is not in a great state of uh of repair, and it needs to be um proper, the equipment needs to be, pardon the the technical terminology, properly racked and off the floor. Um making sure that we have uh this secondary system ready to go. Um last, I think it was last year on uh at Christmas time, the primary service went down, and they had to rely on the secondary paging system. Um so it's really important that um this uh paging system is is uh ready, ready to use and and reliable. So these projects are um at the forty-seven thousand dollar level for the annual cost, and as I I note, um almost a little bit over half is funded by surplus. This is the, the five-year, five-year financial plan for the service area. As I say, nearly all of this is funded, funded by tax requisition. So almost at the $2 million level per year. This budget has been, we've incorporated the estimated costs from ECOM 911. We do continue to work with ECOM 911 to try and get clarity on the agreements. I do note that the agreements that support fire dispatch, fire dispatch services, they have expired. They will expire December of this year. Yeah, I also have our manager of fire dispatch management on the line if there's any questions in specifically related to the projects that were on the screen before.
Thank you. I have a question from Director Castle.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Lam. Through to staff. If you could go back a slide, when we talk about North Fraser at the hall, there are three halls. Which hall are we referring to?
Okay, great question. I'm going to call upon Yatter Wong. Yatter is our manager of fire dispatch management and he's on the line. He can probably help me with the, the specifics on that one.
Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Gary. Through the chair to Director Castle. This is the maintenance for the radio filter upgrade is for North Fraser O1.
O1?
Okay, thank you. And, and one more question if I could. Can you help me understand why these area-specific services are being, are in the regional budget? For instance, why wouldn't the cost, that cost for North Fraser? Why wouldn't that be in the North Fraser budget? And likewise with Abbotsford. So, so my understanding is all the areas are paying for these services upgrades? Can you help me understand that?
Thank you. Through the chair to Director Castle. Excellent question. At times we've looked at that ourselves. It is due to the, the origination of the service area establishment bylaw. So, so some of these costs, yes, they're specific to certain areas, but really it's the whole fire dispatch service, service area that, that the Fraser Valley Regional District supports. So we have not gone into that granularity and haven't set up specific service area budgets for each of those areas.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Kineman, were you going towards your microphone? Don't. Okay. I'm looking at other comments or was there additional presentation? Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. At this point, we are looking for a, a motion, please, for the staff recommendation of the, the proposed plan, the proposed budget, or if there's desire to remove some of those projects, although it will have minimal impact on the taxation.
Thank you. So I have a quick question, Ms. Longborough. I know this one's a little bit more difficult. So all of the, all of the board basically is paying into this regional fire dispatch, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there any easier, handy kind of cheat sheet to show how that requisition breaks down in terms of the area participants? Do we know the percentages or a rough idea in terms of dollar value?
It is all assessment based. We do have the impacts.
I saw a couple of them because I looked through the EA budgets. I saw fire dispatch drop significantly in quite a few of them. In fact, I think all of them. But it would have gone up then presumably this increase would have been, the burden would have been borne by the, the municipal partners.
Correct. It's, it's assessment based, Chair Lam. Again, so I'm just looking in the, it's a page 76 and 77 in the, the paper copy handouts. So for example, in the city of Chilliwack, the, the increase has gone up by 23,000 as compared to last year for the city of Chilliwack. But the impacts to the average residential property owner have decreased. It was that, that, that math of the distribution of the property assessments.
Yeah, it's not an easy, it's not an easy mathematical equation. One day we should draw that out on a whiteboard and see how big it is. But yeah, I just wanted to kind of tease out the point that, you know, the benefit of some of these regional services to Director Castle's point is that, you know, they are born and spread out over kind of a larger service area. And I think in this case, with this particular service, it looks like, you know, there's a, there's a clear good benefit to being able to put this on to a broader, you know, we achieve some economy of scale by putting it onto a bit of a broader tax, tax base there. And where in some cases it may make sense for these specific areas to pay for the specific upgrades, those. Other comments or questions from board directors, Director Fazio?
Move recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do you have a second or? Seconded by Director Ross, further discussion? Don't see any, all in favor? Opposed if any, the item carries. Excited?
Okay. Thank you. We are at the conclusion of this morning's formal presentation. At this time, point in time, we'll ask if there are any other questions. We do have a resolution. I'll put it on the screen for the, the, this is the resolution that we had in the report that accompanied this meeting agenda. If we don't have any other questions, we have a proposed resolution. After today, we will take the feedback that we've incorporated with the motions that have been approved this morning. We'll prepare our materials and publish it on our website, the Have Your Say website, and conduct our public consultation period. And of course, we'll report back on the feedback that we receive in the public consultation period. And if there's any adjustments or feedback that we need to incorporate into the financial plan, we will do so and we will report back in March.
So any adjustments, just for clarity, any adjustments or proposals that come in via this next phase of consultation? The board will have an opportunity to speak into those before they're incorporated and we, and we vote on this at our next board meeting. So I want to, just before we get to a resolution and, and open the floor, I want to look to board members, directors for any commentary on the budget. Any questions for staff? I hear Director Adamo.
Just one question, please. Through the chair to staff. What is the actual communication distribution to the public at this process or once this is, if this is approved? So what means of communication is extended to the public to give them adequate time to draft any questions or concerns?
Thank you. Through the chair to Director Adamo. It will be through our website, through the Have Your Say website. We'll also be posting news, news, news articles on our website and social media to make sure that there's the, the capture of the audience to, to solicit their feedback.
Also, board members would be, feel free to encourage feedback on, on the budget as it moves forward. Director Fazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank the staff for the presentation this morning. Excellent presentation. And many questions answered in, in a very expertise way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Davidson.
And just one quick follow-through to staff on the Have Your Say. I take it this deck will be available online. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
Director Horn?
My comments are also about communication. I suppose I have three things to ask. As you said, Chair Lam, as local politicians in our own communities, we can share some of this information. It would be very useful if staff could give us a bit of a, 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 a one pager that we can share with our own local communications people to distribute and that would include the Have Your Say link. The second is locally, we found it very useful to do, to have one in-person session before the actual presentation of the budget on budget evening. And I don't know where that might be situated. It might even just be as something as simple as saying to people that they can come in and look at the budget in, in person at the regional district office and leave comments that way. But there are a lot of folks who do not feel connected if their only option is electronic. And I, I want to ask that the staff consider another mechanism for people who aren't comfortable with the electronic approach. And finally, that in the communication, in, in summary of the slide deck, perhaps the public can be able to see some of the options that, that the board today has put forward so they can comment on whether or not they agree with those particular options. I'm sure that was already part of what staff are considering, but just wanted to emphasize it.
Thank you, Director Horn. I see you stop taking your comments there, writing them down. Do we have any other? I don't see any other general comments on this. So do we have a mover on, on an option before the board? And I just want to check in. Were any amendments made throughout the process? I should, should double check here. I don't believe we did, so.
Chair Lam, I think it was all staff recommendations, so option two wouldn't be applicable.
Okay, so do we have a mover and a second or? Yep, option one is moved by Director Mercer, seconded by Director Adamo, further discussion. Director Castle, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Lam. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the work that staff have put into preparing and presenting this financial plan. I know that the budget process began even before a lot of us were elected to our roles and I appreciate the staff time that goes into these plans every year. Having just been elected four months ago, I have not asked enough questions to get the information that I need to feel like I fully understands the impacts of my vote in favor of the increases being proposed. I appreciate the task of trying to find the right balance when providing information to directors who have different needs and wants in terms of the information they need to make the best decisions for their constituents. I have come to realize that the onus is on me to seek out the information I need to be able to answer questions about the services that our taxpayers may have. I admit that realization came too late in this budget process for me to ask the questions. I need to fully understand what I'm voting on. For these reasons, I'm unable to support the motion in front of us this morning. I want to say thank you to staff for their patience as I learned my role at this table and for their time in helping me to navigate this process. I look forward to engaging more fully in the next budget planning process and hope for an opportunity to explore our budget planning processes with staff and directors as we go forward. Thank you.
Director Castle, other comments on the motion? Don't hear? I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? The item carries? Next item.
Thanks, Chair. So we would be then moving to item six, which is public question period for items relevant to the agenda. We don't have any members of the public joining us in the boardroom this morning, but I will turn things over to our corporate officer, Jamie Van Ness, for those that may have provided written comments or are participating online.
Ms. Van Ness?
Thank you. So as Ms. Kineman mentioned, we did provide the public with an opportunity to write in with any questions. We have not received any written questions and we do not have any members of the public joining us on Zoom today. So we can move on to the next item.
Thank you. Next item.
Looking for a resolution to close the meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Director Fazio, seconded by Director Clute. All in favor? Opposed if any, the item carries?
Give us two minutes to close the room.
Thank you.